I'd like to call this meeting of the workshop agenda for the city council on May 10th. The order, roll call please.
Mrs. Bastelli?
Here.
Mrs. Billings?
Here.
Mr. Sirianni?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
And council president, Mr. Blone, is absent this evening. I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the Brighton Avenue Beach Archway with Mr. Hayes.
So I sent you a photo of a conceptual drawing of an archway. We were approached by the Congregational Brothers of Israel who seeks to donate this archway to us. We've got it through a couple of iterations and after talking with Carl, we were going to change it to welcome to West End and welcome to Long Branch if you decide to do it. But essentially, it's a, it's a, it's a, there's a purpose for it. They, the, and this is not my specialty, Jewish law, but they're trying to create the Eiruv, which is the Jewish religious boundary line. You've seen the fishing line in certain neighborhoods that gives them an area that they can go. In any event, to make a long story short, apparently if they can connect from this fence at Renaissance to our guardrail with some sort of a device like this, then...
It's open to them.
It would, it would become part of their, approved by their group that does it, and Orthodox folks could then walk on the boardwalk during the Sabbath. So their solution was to come up with a way to do that. We met down at the, at the location, this is Brighton Avenue, the end of Brighton Avenue. For those of you that haven't figured it out, it's at the very beginning of the boardwalk. This is the area that leads down to the lower bulkhead into a staircase. Stan and I met with them and we went through the height that we would have to have for DPW to get under. Originally, they just showed it with a horizontal piece. We then looked at the design, Carl looked at the design, and we came up with the archway, and that's what they wanted to do. They proposed to donate it to the city, to install it and maintain it. And obviously, their benefit is it connects this, this religious boundary to the boardwalk that enables their folks to, to walk the boardwalk.
There's no, that is the connection? There's no wires or anything?
Nope, that's it. What you see is what it is. It's a, it's a metal or steel or aluminum weather-resistant structure. They would have to provide an engineer drawing for our engineer to review to make sure how it would be installed if you so decide to accept it, and they would install it and they would maintain it.
And that would connect them to the board? That would then make them legally wise to go on the boardwalk?
I'm sorry?
That would give them the ability to go onto the boardwalk?
Yes.
Even though it's arching that area?
Yep. Apparently, it has something to do with the fence at Renaissance. It's apparently in an approved area by whatever organization that, you know, there's a with the medical organization, some type that oversees this. And we met there with the rabbi, and he said if the city allows this, it would give their folks the opportunity to connect, and it would connect the entire boardwalk all the way down to CBU Avenue. So I guess it's a significant benefit for folks to be able to walk, religious folks to be able to use it on the Sabbath.
Okay. Okay.
If, if you, if... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I apologize. If this is conceptually approved by you, at the next meeting, we would have a resolution setting forth parameters of the acceptance of this as a gift to the city with restrictions, the maintenance, et cetera. So heaven forbid, you know, something was destroyed in a, in a storm, wind, lightning or something like that. It would have to be replaced, and they would have to then do it, and that would be their responsibility.
How about tie-in removal if damage is their responsibility?
If it's damaged, they would have to, that would be the way I would construct the resolution if that's conceptually...
I don't like any kind of thing like this, like that isn't indigenous to our boardwalk. You know, it's not like the looks. I don't know, it's like it's confusing. I find it would be confusing and welcome to, even welcome to West End. I don't know, it's already West End, that's not the beginning of West End.
I happen to agree with you.
I personally don't like it.
I don't like just West End.
Do you have a special language that you actually like to say? We were telling them to change it.
I don't know, I'd have to think about it.
Carl?
Supposed to be welcome to West End Beach.
Welcome to West End Beach.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I left the word out. Supposed to say welcome to West End Beach. Carl just reminded me.
Well, we're restricting it, that's the way I feel.
Can we think about it?
But it's Brighton Avenue, why would we say West End Beach?
Can I think about it a little bit?
Brighton Avenue Beach, it's a...
I'd rather not rush it.
You are called. Do whatever you like.
I'd rather not rush it.
Young person, I was presenting it to me, I'm presenting it to you guys, whatever you...
I'd like to think about it.
...choose to do.
Do you want to bring it up for discussion at the next council? The next regular council meeting, which would be the 27th of May, you can get more information, have more discussion and decide what you want to do if you want to do anything at that time.
Where you say welcome to West End, you have a bar across there, you could put, they could put Long Branch underneath it, and still...
Oh, they would put anything you want on it, but just was a suggestion.
Yeah, I still might be, they're sexualizing one area of the city, and I realize it's for them and for the purpose, but we're still all of Long Branch.
Yeah, it doesn't, religiously, it doesn't make a difference whether it says welcome to Long Branch or welcome to North End or...
It could say nothing.
It could say nothing. It could be plain white.
Regardless, they want to put the archway up, it's not the...
That's exactly right.
That's what they need to do. The archway connects them...
I guess I don't even like the way the archway looks. I don't like any of it.
If you have any desire, if you have any redesigns or anything like that, think about it.
Yeah.
Well, what would you think? What would you like?
I don't know, I have to think about it.
You have to think about it?
Yeah. I really haven't had the chance to think about it too much.
You like it the way it is? Would you rather change it, want to keep it, you know?
What would happen if another religious organization came and said, "I want this on the boardwalk"?
Then you would have to decide if you wanted to accept it and put it on?
Based on the conditions that were presented to you at that time, it's all conception.
But how many people will know that it's being erected for religious reasons?
This is very not, it's not really a religious thing.
The resolu, the resu, the way I would draft any resolution would lay out as many facts as possible to give as much transparency to the purpose of whatever it is that you want to do, like we've done in the past.
Can we table it?
Yeah, I'll table it with her. It's not bothering me. It's not bothering me.
You want to table it until the next meeting?
Yes, for joy. I have no problem tabling it, but...
Okay.
Good, I'll let them know.
Okay. And you might tell them where our problems are too.
I'm not sure where our problems are.
Well, if you don't like the name first, I don't personally.
I know, but if you tell me what you'd like it to say, then I'll reprint it.
No, I'm not going to, they've got to come up with something. This is a city of Long Branch.
Yeah.
I don't care whether it's in West End or North End or where.
Yeah, I just need a hint of what I should tell them to put on there, that's all.
And we don't want to put anything.
Yeah, we could leave a blank, that's fine too.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Then it's non-denominational.
Okay, fair enough.
Still gets them what they want.
I would...
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I have no problem with welcome to Long Branch, I think, mate. Can't call it West End, where West End Beach is technically, it's the Brighton Avenue Beach. West End Beach is around further, I mean, if you get, it's more detail to it. I have no problem with welcome to Long Branch, that's the city.
It makes it look like, like Long Branch is supposed to be on the other side of it, and then what's, what's before it then, if the Long Branch is over there?
Welcome to the beach. Welcome to the shore.
Well, that's not a bad idea either.
Or kiss welcome.
Welcome to the friendly city.
Kiss welcome. Welcome to the friendly city.
I like that.
I'd like to think about it.
All right. Scarlett, you think about it?
We'll table it until next meeting.
Yes, mate.
You have anything to go back on?
Sure.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Fine.
Okay. Discussion regarding the police department ordinance, Chief Groba?
Good evening. So, as we were talking about class threes for schools for the last meeting, I reached out to a friend of mine who's a chief of power, police department, and he sent me all his documents. They have been doing the class two program for close to a year now. One of the things he sent me was the ordinance change, which was good because I didn't think to look at the ordinance, so we did. And our ordinance didn't have class twos in it, and we needed to add class threes in it. So a lot of the, I think yours is red, mine's blue, a lot of the red ink that you see is mostly taken right from Title 40, which is the state law that appoints class ones and class twos and class threes. So all that, from 78-13 down, is basically all taken from Title 40, we put it in there. It basically talks about class ones, class twos and class threes, what they can do, what they're allowed to do. And since we were going over the ordinance, we also just cleaned up some language, some stuff that's been outdated there for a long time, about hiring, changed some things about the chief, changed hiring. Our, I think our ordinance said 21, that's not legal, it has to be 18. We had something in there that said you had to be five feet seven, you can't have it anymore, so we took that out. There's a few things in there that we took out that are no longer applicable to us, things we don't do. Figured if we're going to take a look at it, we would take a look at the whole thing and update it and figure it out. I could go through each change, or you could just ask me if you guys have any questions or any problems.
You're basically saying the language is from the statute, so...
Yeah, title, everything from the special officer section is all from the Title 40 statute, and everything else was just language that was kind of old and we just cleaned it up.
How's, not to get into full, full detail, how is getting funding recruits for class three?
So we have three that were ready to go. One dropped out. He's, place where he's working now decided to offer him some more money and some more hours to keep him. The other two, actually, I just got an email prior to coming in here, they're going for their medical exam, I think, early next week. I believe they've already had their psychological exam, so they're pretty much ready to go. You're going to vote on the MOA tonight when I send it to the school, and I think we're going to be ready to go in the next couple of weeks, I believe, in the next week or two. We have, I think we got their uniforms ordered and ready, we'll have to get them...
What schools are going to come first? What school has got into two?
I believe the middle school and high school is the first ones.
And will they have them before the end of the school year?
They will, we'll hopefully do it before the end of the school year, just to kind of get a start for next year. We want to kind of get a feel on it and see how it's going to work, and then we're going to continue to hire for the summer. We have about 15 people now that are in the line to do it. We'll see, we'll see how we, how we do, and then we'll hire...
It's 15 of the last three.
Fifteen, yeah, we have about 15 applications right now.
That's great.
So we're going to hire, I think, I think they want to hire at least seven more, hopefully for September, so we're going to work all, summer, getting them through the process and getting everything done now, once we get all the paperwork signed and all that, in this past and the next few weeks.
Can we go back to the ordinance?
Yes.
Section 11. I think it's number five.
Okay.
Where it says the special law enforcement is going to be under the supervision of the director of police, and in essence, it means that when you're not here, another law enforcement person would be in charge.
Correct.
I thought that the chain of command was the business administrator.
Well, I'm, so this section, I'm sorry. Jay, which section she had?
She said 11.
Oh, section H, I'm sorry.
H under, under which, under which one we look at?
There's no distinction there.
Oh, H?
One, two, three, four, five, five is my question. I guess that's...
Okay, I see, under I, under I, Jay.
Under I, under what, number 78?
78. 78 dash 13.
Under I, okay.
Letter I, and then the number five.
Oh, five, okay.
Number five, or no, brand five.
Any...
Well, the bottom line is, what's the chain of command? Is that the proper chain of command?
Yes.
Yes. That is the proper chain of command.
And that, and that, this is out of the state statute, by the way. This is out of Title 40A.
Okay.
Yes, that is, that is the way that it should be.
Right, that way you don't have a civilian supervising a use of law or armed personnel.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, just one question. My, my understanding is, is that the Board of Ed will be reimbursing the city for the cost of these officers for this program.
Correct.
Is, has anyone checked with the Board of Ed to make sure that this expense is within the Board's budget so that the Board will either, if the Board increases the budget, that might be a increase in taxes to the city taxpayers?
We've talked to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, who has talked to their, I guess CFO, over there, business number four, what's?
Pete.
Pete Genneves. Black, so he had Pete Genneves. They have talked to him, and he has reported back to the super that they're going to be able to do what they need to do.
Is that something that you would like in the resolution that would...
Oh, that they're paying, reimbursing?
That's in the MOA.
It's in the MOA.
It's in the MOA, which is being voted on, which we gave you last time.
Yeah.
That's all in the MOA, that they're going to pay monthly for the officers.
They're going to post an escrow similar to like an overtime shift.
Same way we did with the fire department in Mount Beach and what have you.
Correct. Similar. Similar to like an outside overtime.
Yeah, more can do an outside overtime.
Yeah, more, you know, like an outside overtime.
So they'll pay for the month in advance, and we'll draw it down, and then whatever's left over would refund to that source.
No problem. So they said they're, they said they're fine, I didn't, you know...
You're going to put all that in the resolution?
It's in the MOA.
It's in the MOA.
Okay.
So you're okay.
Anybody have any more questions? The next item is the taxi medallion here, Chief Groba?
Yes, so Kathleen Poffis has been a taxi driver for us for quite a while. She wants to apply to buy a medallion. She has some, she has some history, criminal history. I don't really want to get into it here and let out her criminal history, but she has some criminal history. It was in 1992 was her last charge. She was able to get a taxi license because back then, when she first started to apply, we didn't have the laws that we have now. And when they did pass the law, they let anybody who had a license, you know, kind of continue with it. So she's been getting a license every year, we haven't had any problems with her issues. But when she came to me to do this, you guys actually have to approve the taxi medallions. I didn't want to say yes unless you knew what was happening with her and, you know, that she had this before you even said no. I have no issue with her at all, we have no issue with her downstairs. We spoke to the traffic department, they haven't had an issue with her. So I just wanted you to be aware of that before you gave it to her. You know, what I don't want to see is then everybody comes here and, you know, has this, and, you know, we say yes to everybody without letting somebody know. So I just want to give you guys a heads up, which is why I said no, which would make her come here, so you guys could hear the whole story, you know.
But she's been driving for 11 years.
She's been driving for 11 years.
And she's still have, she's still eligible for her license?
She's eligible for the license, this is just for her to own the taxi medallion.
Do we have any up for sale still?
We must, or is she buying from somebody else?
Oh, she's buying it from somebody else, okay.
We don't have any left for sale? They're all gone?
That's what I thought, they were all gone, I guess.
You don't see any problem with this, except setting a precedent?
Correct, correct. And that's what I was worried about, and again, just want to let you know, you know, before it went through, again, I don't really see, you know, a big issue with it. It was 26 years ago?
Yeah, she's got a clean record.
Since then?
Except that we don't want to set a precedent, but I think you could aggress all of them individually.
So basically, it's a transfer of the medallion.
She's buying, yeah, she's transferring it from another person.
Transferring it from one person to another.
Right.
So she's buying it from that. So the fact that she has had her license for 26 years, though, that should, I mean...
Well, she's a clean...
How many people with a... No, 2007.
She's been clean for, yeah, she hasn't been in any trouble for 26 years. She's had a taxi license for...
2007, she got her...
Yeah, 11 years she's had a taxi license here.
So how many people with a record that have had a license for 11 years?
Oh, there's probably some, there's some. They didn't pass that taxi law saying that you couldn't have a taxi license with certain things until, I want to say 2014, and then they said that they wouldn't look back, you know, your grandfather didn't, if you already had it, and then you have to keep, you know, keep your license.
The way we draft the resolution would be that they would not set a precedent or let, it would be limited to the facts of this individual's case.
It's my guess.
And in, yes, and in this instance, the criminal activity goes back 26 years, well, a quarter century, and she's been clean from any involvement with the criminal justice system for that long, and on those facts, you could, you would be justified in granting her the ability to own now a medallion, which is a taxi cab license. So she not only would drive, but she'd own a cab, and then she'd be able to sell that cab license, and it will be restricted to the facts of her case.
Right, and that was my only issue with it. I didn't want to set a precedent, so we're going to do this all the time.
But we're going to have the hearing still.
You'll still have the hearing, you'll still listen to her. If there's something that she says that would change your mind, you have the absolute right to do that. And you still have the right to approve, reject, or have her come back at a future time in the event that you find any questions. So you're not prejudging this application by anything that's been said tonight because she's not here, and we're doing it in open session in the workshop because we can't, as a council, talk about someone's hearing in advance.
Do we have questions? Okay. I added an additional one because it was one of my, my questions. I'd like Mr. Hayes to explain the speed limit along Ocean Avenue and what the state said and why.
Sure. So back in March, we made a presentation to you about trying to get a unified speed limit on Ocean Boulevard. It involves the county from Brighton Avenue to Julyne Avenue, it involves the state from Julyne Avenue to the Mount Beach line. So we presented a resolution, which you adopted on March 13th, we sent it to the state, sent it to the county, and we've gone back and forth with them since then, and the state has contacted us, and it's, it's all done by traffic counts and factors of, with the road, the length of crosswalk, the traffic light system, and apparently there's quite a science to it. But at the end of the day, they would be willing to lower that speed limit from 45 to 40, but they wouldn't come down to 35 because the traffic counts don't, don't mark, you know, require that to happen. So they said this is the best we can do. If you want us to do this, we need you to pass a resolution. They gave us a, a resolution that Kathy was nice enough to type up, and that, this is what you have to have, if that's what you want to do. I've thought it as far as I can go. I don't know what else to do, and I've been in numerous discussions with the county engineer, had them out on the Boulevard two weeks ago, going over with them, and I fear that they're going to come up with the same conclusion, although the state has really been exceptionally fast in getting to the bottom of this for us, so, but we just didn't get what we wanted, so...
How do you feel?
And if I may, I think it also has something to do with average speed, right, of the vehicles on there? So I think at least if this is anything, this is a good first step, because now we're bringing it down to 35, and maybe we ask again?
Forty.
We're forty, we're bringing it down to 40 from what it was, so maybe we ask again, and maybe if we can get people to go slower, then, then we can bring it down to 35, so maybe it'll be a...
Forty-five to 40 on the state section.
Yeah, so maybe it'll be a two-step deal?
And then the county...
You know, instead of a one-step deal?
The county section has a couple of different speed limits, and they haven't come back to it yet, but I'm assuming that they're going to probably be 40 in the divided highway areas, which is pretty much the length of it. And Julyne Avenue would be 35 miles an hour from the west Long Branch border to Ocean Boulevard. They took the whole state highway 36 and did the traffic analysis on it.
Oh, they get the whole thing?
Yeah, that's why it's a little confusing.
It said Ocean Boulevard on the top.
Right, yes, yes.
They, you know, they refer to it a little bit differently than we know it as, but...
Right.
So the resolution's on there, if that's what you want to do, then you approve it, and we'll get that, get that moving, and get them to get that speed down to 40.
You want to go back again and see if we can get it?
I think we should do this as the first step, and then maybe in the future, we can go back again, we'll see if there's worse, but I mean, at, at the worst, it brings us down from 45 to 40, so, you know, it's going to help everybody over the, somewhere to try to get across the road.
And once the county weighs in, and I'm assuming they're going to probably do the same thing, we're probably going to re-sign the road as well.
Re-sign the whole road.
Because it's a little confusing now, it's 35 in some areas by Pier Village, but not very well more, so, you know.
Do you think they'll up it from 35 to 40 by Pier Village, or leave it at 35?
I don't know. They hint that it would probably, would be difficult to get the rest of it down to 35, so I don't think that they're probably going to see the option of, you know, making the whole road 40, is my guess, but I'm going to keep pushing them, but I think, you know, it's...
One step on it.
Yeah.
Kevin, what would be the best interest of the city for this summer?
Well, I think, I think the best interest of the city is to have it at 35 the whole road, but we just, they won't do it.
So if you, if this resolution is passed tonight by the council, will it be an improvement over what we presently have?
Yeah, because it only affects the state section, which is 45, so it brings it down to 40, so it's an improvement.
So, and then if we find, or the city finds in future summers that there are still problems, those problems will be documented, and then the council, mayor at that time can...
Listen, we're allowed to convince the county that their section should be at 35, they go back to the state and work on that, but right now, this is the best they can do.
About in six months, we do a review after we've had the summer traffic?
Sure.
Okay?
Absolutely.
The portion of the, the portion there that's near Pier Village?
The what?
The portion by Laird Street?
Yeah.
In that area?
Yes.
Is that county?
It is, yeah.
That's that one?
It's county from Julyne Avenue all the way to Cedar Avenue, this county.
So which line is Cedar?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we would, we would come back to you to make our section of Ocean Avenue from, actually, we would make it from Cedar, all the way down to the Deal Line. 35. And have that, so we, the unified thing wouldn't be there, but it's a single language.
We could, we could do that ourselves.
But I think, I think getting the, getting the speed limit quantified and then getting good signage up would be the first step, and then, you know, for the chief's guys to do some enforcement, would really bring it home.
Especially with this summer approach.
Yeah.
Let's move with it, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree.
All right? Michael, you're all right, Joe? Okay. And the next item is the review of the regular agenda meeting. Any questions, anybody?
Nope.
Could you explain to me again about the option package on that truck?
Yeah, so I talked to Charlie. It's a, it's a state contract purchase, same as we bought the truck for the beaches, it's the same exact truck, and the way they break it out is a base price and an option package, but it's all the one, we can't pick and choose, it's an option package.
And what's the major reason of getting the option package?
Well, we're replacing a truck that is outdated and unserviceable.
What in, what in the options is necessary?
Four-wheel drive, I think the extended cab.
Yeah, there's another, there's a number of items in there for, if you want to be able to tow, tow the phone trailer and...
Tow package.
And the accessory package, something like that.
Right. So all the others?